Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting of February 24th, 2021. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic, which stands under God.
One nation, under God, liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is healthy and home and safe. There were moments of springtime gives us some hope here on February 24th. And for the folks at home, Matt, can we show them tonight's town board meeting agenda, please? Okay, and if you would scroll down just a little bit, Matt. So we do have a public hearing tonight at 7:35. That's on a local law A. It's a moratorium, a six-month moratorium on road opening permits. As we update our road specifications, we have only a few items on the agenda besides our committee and board reports. The first will be a very brief summary, preview of what our financials were for 2020. I know folks will be interested to see how that's going to shake out. And we're just about finished with all the work related before the submission of it, which comes up in the next few weeks. We have a resolution to set the public hearing for the Red Hook Fire Company contract and also for the Tivoli Fire Company contract. And those contracts are also available for viewing. And then we'll take up discussion and potential action on local law A or local law number one. And then we have our board reports and department reports and committee reports, and that's it. We will go into executive session later on in the evening to discuss some property tax matters. So that's, that's what we have in store for tonight. And without further ado, let's go to announcements, Matt, if you could. Just one announcement for folks, and we're going to do a little COVID update as well. But there's a food drive that is in support of the Red Hook Response Effort. And it's being led by the Red Hook Rotary, once again, doing great work for our community. And it is for dropping off non-perishables on February 27th from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Unfortunately, if you are watching this at home, that date has already passed, but we will put it up on our website so folks can see. And Matt, maybe we can even do a little news alert on that as well. So that is Saturday, 8 to 10 at the Masonic Lodge. That's on Grave Street. They're just east of the intersection, north and east of the intersection in Red Hook Village. Looking for soup, cereal, beans, stew, tuna, chicken, and more. Thanks to the Red Hook Rotary for their work. We do want to give you a little bit of a COVID update. Things are changing rather quickly. We like to keep you up to date about the virus in the community. And this is the information we have as of a couple of days ago. What we're seeing is that in Dutchess County, while the cases are down, obviously, post-holiday spike, they are being a little bit stubborn and staying up higher than than we would like. If you look at confirmed cases, 21,769 that have been documented, you know, that's now starting to approach 8% of the population. And as everybody acknowledges, there's obviously a lot more folks that have had it over time. Okay, and that we can go down to the next slide. In the Red Hook, the latest number I saw, by the way, was 19 in the community. So here's, here's the good news. If you've been following what's happening is that we're now to understand that there'll be 240 million doses distributed by the end of March in the United States. The local supply is also ramping up because of weather delays for last week added on to an increase for this week in Dutchess County. There'll be 4,000 doses that will be administered. And so that's good news. Also, if you were watching the news today, you saw that the J and J vaccine is being recommended for approval. The approval is expected later this week. It's a single dose. Johnson &amp; Johnson has indicated that they expect to be able to provide three or four million doses next week and as many as 20 million by the end of that March 31st deadline. I think in total, they're looking at 100 million doses. All toll and toll, by July, there is something in the order of 700 million doses that are on order between the three companies making up the vaccines. And then I mentioned concerning two things. Obviously, the we're all hearing about the various strains and mutations that are coming out. If you watched the news this morning, you perhaps heard about this new strain in California. It's being referred to, at least momentarily, as the California strain. And it is apparently more severe or causes more severe illness than the original formation of the virus. And then, as I mentioned earlier, Dutchess County, the numbers and the positivity rate, you know, bordering on 5%, 6% are being sort of stubbornly high, although not nearly as high as what they were post-holiday. So next slide, if we could. We have this information on the website and we'll update it again tonight and tomorrow morning. But just again, reminders of all the different ways that you can access vaccines. And of course, New York State has two mechanisms to go online or to call this, this number. And we have the list of who's eligible at the moment. And, you know, our understanding is eligibility will only open up more in April, and it could conceivably be open to just about everybody at that time. Obviously, this is all very fluid. Next slide, please, Matt. Okay, here are more pre-existing medical conditions, and you're asked to bring documentation of some of those conditions or at least one of those conditions, if that's how you qualify for the vaccine. Okay, next slide, Matt. These are some of the locations, and I think that we took a snapshot earlier today just to say that, you know, there are appointments available, when they are, where they're located, how convenient they are. You know, obviously, changes minute by minute, literally. You can get online and you'll see appointments available. And then by the time you you go to input it, there may or may not be appointments. When you're looking at some of the state sites, SUNY Albany was one of the nearest ones. And now there's a second location up at the Washington Avenue Armory. And White Plains is also not that far away. I know folks, some folks have driven down to Javits Center or, you know, even out west in New York in order to get appointments. So hopefully, the demand will start to be met by the supply. And I know that there's been a great deal of frustration and effort on the part of individuals to try and get themselves vaccinated. In the meantime, obviously, the recommendations to stay masked, social distance, the combination of the two will help us hopefully win the race and then get towards herd immunity. So next slide. Here are some other testing sites, sampling. I don't know that it's it's complete, but it's almost complete. And just to show you different locations within our county, excuse me, most of the locations are in the southern portion of the county. That is pretty consistent with the caseload as well. It's distributed mainly down towards the south. These are the places that you can contact directly if you qualify. And if you see at the bottom there pharmacies, there are some pharmacies, as we've mentioned in the past, that are conducting vaccinations, and that is solely for the population that is 65 and older. And I think that's pretty much the update that we have for COVID. Okay. Very good, Matt. We don't have any public comments at this time. Let's, shall we? Let's open our public hearing and apologize, folks. We had some technical difficulties. So we're running a little late this evening. Deanna, do you have the public hearing announcement?
Yes. Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on February 24th, 2021 at 7:35 PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law A, proposed entitled "A Local Law Placing a Six-Month Moratorium on the Issuance of Permits for Work Within the Right-of-Way of a Town Highway in the Town of Red Hook," the proposed local law. The proposed local law would modify the provisions of the Town Code of the Town of Red Hook to prohibit the issuance of permits for work within the right-of-way of a town highway in the Town of Red Hook as the town considers amendments to the Town of Red Hook highway specifications to make the regulations there inconsistent with applicable provisions of the Town Code policies and guidelines, including but not limited to Town of Red Hook zoning law, the Centers and Green Spaces Plan, and the Town of Red Hook Complete Streets Guidelines. Ensure safety of those traveling along town roadways and promote community planning values by regulating roadway development based on a carefully considered plan. Due to the ongoing COVID pandemic, the Town Hall is closed to the general public until further notice. Pursuant to Executive Order Number 202.1, as extended, as extended issued by Governor Cuomo and the and advisories issued by federal, state, and local officials related to the COVID-19 virus, the public will not be permitted to attend in person. Board members are expected to participate in public hearing via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the Town website at www.rehock.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandaTV23.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to rmcian@rehock.org and 845-758-4622 by 4:00 PM the day of the hearing. Please note local law A, proposed of 2021, in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the town's Dropbox in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. Three, all comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Interested persons may also comment by email or telephone to rmcian@rehock.org and 845-758-4622 on the date of the hearing from the time of opening the hearing until the close of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 845-758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated February 9th, 2021, Deanna Cochran, Town of Red Hook, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thanks, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. And we did receive one piece of correspondence from Mr. John Wagner. And so I'd like to enter that into the record for the public hearing, and we've had time to consider those comments. And for the folks at home, this is an initiative to update our road specifications that we've been working on for quite some time. We applied for a grant from the Greenway as part of our Complete Streets Initiative. If you're not familiar with the concept of Complete Streets, it's designing your streets to accommodate things like trail entrances, which we'll be working on this year, and biking and pedestrian traffic. And so we made an application. We were successful in getting a grant back in 2017, and so we've been wanting to pursue this. And so we've now hired an engineering firm with, you know, specific capabilities in this area. And we need to, you know, we need to close out that that Greenway grant. We need to get going on our Complete Streets. We've got a lot of exciting trail initiatives as well as other things that, you know, intersect with this. So what we're doing is, as we do in all cases, when we go to make changes, we're instituting a moratorium for a six-month period. And that will give us the time to update our road specifications to make sure that they have modern-day safety standards and also address those other needs of the community. So that's really for the benefit of the folks at home. And let's see if we have any other comments. We do not have any other public hearing comments. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing. Is there a second for that? You're all muted.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Bill. All right, any discussion? If not, all in favor, Bill O'Neill? I think Bill is maybe muted. Bill, are you there? There you are. You're muted. Do you want to hit that?
Oh, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so that's an I. Okay, Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Hi, Christine Kane?
Hi.
Hi, thank you very much. Okay. So we're moving right along to the first item on the agenda, and that's a fiscal year 2020. We are just about finished. So I'm going to tell you this, these are tentative numbers. But because the meeting falls where it does in this month, we wanted to give you a report for 2020. Obviously, there is a lot of a lot of changes that we encountered. And we did our best to try to adjust to the dramatic changes in our revenue streams coming in. You know, many of our permit fees and sales tax revenues dried up and dried up dramatically during the, certainly, the first portion and second portion of the COVID outbreak. And so we sustained quite a hit to those, and we had to make some difficult decisions. And we did, like many communities, we did have to reduce some of the staffing hours in our departments. And we would like to report to you what 2020 looks like. So Matt, if if you would go down to the first, first page. So the highlights for 2020 is our fund balances remain strong despite the pandemic and the hit to our revenues. And significantly, we were in the middle of major capital projects. So we were renovating, overhauling our rec parks and expanding them and doing some highway infrastructure. So we continue to plan for the future through our capital reserve accounts. We've got other projects we're in the middle of right now. Standard and Poor's reaffirmed our rating just, just a few months ago as we did another refunding at AA. And they have cited strong management in their review of our town finances. Next page, Matt. Okay, and things that we've mentioned is that the big capital projects we were undergoing and actually had to stop in the middle of and then resurrect when it was possible to do so. The parks is the major expense associated with that. And then the Stony Brook Bridge Culvert project finally completed. And so also our clean energy and energy efficient upgrades. We continue to work on retrofitting Town Hall, solar for the highway garage, and our streetlight initiative, which is just about complete with the exception of a few new poles that needed to be added to Route 9. I mentioned the highway infrastructure. Next slide, please, Matt. Okay, each year when we review, we want to make sure that the folks at home know that we, on the local level, can't do a lot of these projects without partnering with our government partners and our private sector. And we have received over the last several years many grants. And here are some of the dollar amounts that we've received for projects, everything from a sidewalk to the recreation accessibility. We're very proud of the efforts that we've already achieved on increasing accessibility to our community and recognize that we have more to go. I mentioned the staffing reorg over the years. We've done it pre-pandemic, and obviously, we had to do some during the pandemic. So that reduction amounts to over $200,000 per year. And we have had good success with refinancing our debt. Just a few months ago, we had a refinancing for the second round, and we were able to achieve another 139,000 of present value savings. Mentioned the LED streetlight conversion project, which is just about finished. We now own our streetlights, and because we own our streetlights, we have a greatly reduced expense associated with that. And hopefully, you like what you're seeing out there in the community with those subtle but clean lights that are out there on the streets. And they use a lot less electricity. And so the reduced cost and has amounted and will amount to over $100,000 over the life of of those lights. Next, next slide, Matt. And here's just some details of the various funds and how the balances have changed over the year. Next slide, Matt. Okay, and more, more of this. And, and here, we mentioned, if you could blow that up just a little bit, Matt, the fund balance report. So this is what we anticipate when we file this report in just the next few weeks is our fund balances for the various funds. And as you can see, we had, you know, the largest drop-off was actually the anticipated one, which was the capital account. We had been accruing monies over the last several years towards the project that we knew we were going to do, which is the recreation parks and the Stony Brook Culverts. The A Fund is where those projects took place, and it still has a healthy remaining fund balance in it. B and DB because of the changes that we made and the fact that sales tax, and we do have information now that gives us a pretty good degree of confidence of what the sales tax number will be for 2020. And it is down, obviously, but it's not down nearly as much as we either anticipated or it could have been. There was a nice bounce back as the economy was able to open up. We are seeing anecdotally, however, that in January and February in the cold weather, that actually there is a bit of a slumping taking place again. And so we'll want to monitor that as well. In the A Fund, our revenues for mortgage taxes, as it became clear, especially in the fall, there was this sort of mass exodus outside of urban areas. And so we did achieve, albeit it'll probably be temporary in nature, a much higher expected mortgage tax revenues in the A Fund. And that pretty much summarizes the major changes. All toll and toll through the various funds in the Community Preservation Fund at this point is the one that has the most money, and that's a dedicated fund for buying easements on working lands, the historic properties, recreational lands, so on and so forth. And now that's now approaching $2 million, though we do have one or two projects in the pipeline for that as well. Strong fund balances for the Water District and a breakdown of what what, what that entails and which reserve accounts they are. Okay, I think that's it for Matt. Those are the slides we have for, for that. Okay. Is there any, any question, soundboard members, that you have on our 2020 highlights? You'll get the full report in a matter of days.
Thanks for that presentation, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. I think it's all good news. Things remain strong in our community. And, you know, we've been able to do this without raising taxes, which obviously is very important right now because the cost of living, certainly buying into these communities, hasn't gotten any cheaper over the last six months or so. Okay, very good. So that's agenda item number one. Two and three are related. It's to set a public hearing for our fire contracts. This is for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. And for the folks at home, if you don't already know, we have something that is becoming more and more rare. In the United States, we have volunteer fire companies and volunteer firefighters. And they are so important to not only the safety of our community, but certainly to the fiscal health of our communities, because if we had to pay for these services, we would have a very different tax application for folks living in our community. And so we're very happy to support them with the amount of funding that we have in the past and a little bit more. And, you know, it, it may and probably will be necessary that we increase some of that funding, even during the course of this, this contract period. We may come back to you and talk about certain needs that they have. For instance, the stipend program, the LOSSAP program, which we do have here both for Red Hook and Tivoli Companies. It's a stipend that helps compensate them for their costs incurred with getting to and from calls and any other expenses. It was a very small stipend they were given years ago. And that limit has been raised up in Albany to $1,200 a year. And so that's something that, you know, we may be coming, coming back to ask whether or not we want to have a referendum to increase that stipend. I certainly would support that in order to, you know, maintain our volunteers, but also to, to send a message that we're greatly appreciative for what they do and to help compensate them for the expenses, non-reversible expenses that they incur. So we would call a public hearing for these two contracts for our next meeting. I believe we have enough time. Do you know if that's correct? And get it on the docket for March 9th. We have one combined resolution. It's Resolution Number 15, dated February 24th, 2021. And it says March 9th, 7:35, 3:30. Already 3:30 in. And we would welcome any comments that folks have at that time. And certainly words of support for the dedicated men and women of our fire companies. And so I assume move resolution number 15. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. Any further discussion? If not, I heard you, Jacob Testa. I, Christine Kane.
Hi.
Bill Hamel.
Hi.
Hi, okay. Very good. So those are agenda items two and three. We're down to four, which is the subject of our public hearing. It's local law A. That's a local law to enact a six month moratorium and work within a town highway. I think the law is pretty self explanatory. And as we, as I mentioned earlier, whenever we go to make changes, we enact a moratorium. We've done so recently with our natural resources or Centers and Green Space Plan, gives us time to update the code. And so we're looking at a projected timeline of six month. And so there's a waiver provision, as there always is with these moratoriums, and we would encourage anyone who feels that they would qualify to to please come in and apply for a waiver under these provisions. And that's what I have on that. Would, this would be resolution number 16?
Go move.
Okay, that's a Bill O'Neill moving. All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. Okay, any further discussion on this? Okay. All in favor? Jacob Testa?
All right. Wait, are we gonna have discussion? I'd like to have discussion on the resolution?
Oh, sorry, I did ask if there was discussion, Christine. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, my internet cut out a little bit there. Sorry.
It is a bit of a
Sorry. So I just wanted to say that again, you know, at the last meeting I had asked for, you know, I said I would be in favor of having the public hearing, but I was looking for some more information about the the project, which in this case is the updating of the highway specs. And, you know, I was looking for a scope of work and a cost associated with that and a timeframe. And we have not, I've not seen that. We have a sort of a ballpark maximum idea, I guess, suggestion of costs, but there still is no scope of work to get this. So I I'm not really sure why we can't table it perhaps and, you know, discuss it again when we get that information or update and make any updates to it that might be required at that point. So if I don't know if that's a possibility, if anybody wants to discuss that.
Okay. I would just say that we have put off now twice as for two extensions from the Greenway. We said we were going to update our road specifications three years ago. And so we finally have reached the point where we have our engineers, they have the task order. They are in fact meeting with our Highway Superintendent this week. And hopefully we'll have that information more detailed. The scope is to update our road specifications and to do a comprehensive update of of the specs themselves, which date all the way back to the 90s. I've only had a minor tweak. So I feel the need for us to move forward. At this point, it's it's one of the very few things we haven't accomplished that's been on our plate over the last five years or so. Any other further thoughts?
I kind of agree with Christine. I think that I understand that there's a long timeframe and we need to move forward, but it seems like a two week delay in voting on this, you know, for even the next immediate March 9 wouldn't be unreasonable, given, you know, the scope. And like the the timeframe, I think that there's time to, you know, get that together and discuss it with that information.
Okay, we can, of course, look at the scope of services, modify the scope of services during the the time period. You know, depending upon how that comes in, look at the cost, see if we want to adjust the scope, reduce that. That could take a little time. I do think we do need to move forward with with getting this work done. We've we've delayed it now for quite some time.
So you want to call the question?
Sure. We have a motion. We have a second by Bill Hamel. All in favor? Christine Kane?
No.
Okay, Jacob Testa?
Nay.
Okay, myself, aye. Okay, the resolution is approved.
I didn't hear Bill O'Neill.
He made the
I moved it. Oh, sorry.
No worries. Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we're on that period where we're going to now do board reports. Matt, if you could scroll through. Okay, and I want to acknowledge, as we go through, we did receive from Duchess County, and that's part of the record, their response to the referral on local law A, and that is included in the documents as well. It's a matter of local concern. Okay, so board reports. Water District, Bill Hamel.
Matt, that's a little small. Do you think you could zoom in on that a little? Thank, that's better. Thank you.
We have Bill. Did we lose?
Bill, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Once again, I'm happy to report that the chloroform report on the testing is is there's no chloroform detected. That's always good news. The rest of the testing looks good. Our pumping looks good in terms of the numbers of gallons per minute. There's a couple of things in the next page that I think I would like to point out. We're going to begin testing tomorrow for the PFOAs and PFOs and dioxin. Important, important thing to do, given the nature of PFOAs and and how they how they flow through the water table. And I think it's important that we start testing that and make sure I I I don't know that we've had like Cobal Junction or other places where we've had the types of industries that could contaminate our our well water, but it's important that we that we do that. So I was happy to see that we're going to be doing that. There's some outstanding work orders for for the wells. Got an email. There's a RFP that's going out for basically rehabs of the wells, redoing the tops of the wells with manholes. That's not on this, but it starts to talk about these are these issues of the well monitoring and the use of timers and remote controls for the for the pumps, but there is some work that will need to be done regarding some rehab work on the wells and there's an RFP that's out. They did not, they were unhappy with, there were basically a few bids that were not. They didn't, they didn't come in correctly. And so I think they're going to put it back out again, but it's important they have to raise this height of the mount, the manholes three feet to to get it above the 100 year flood level, which is the highest known flood level that we have. And and those are, those are things that are in the works. So we're not really having any problems with the water. And they've been creative in dealing with some of the issues regarding monitoring the wells. And they're looking at some longer term possibilities and what the costs are and whether they're cost effective for our residents and our customers. So that's the water department.
Move right on into dog control.
All right. Yeah, well, there was one nuisance dog last month. It was a barking complaint. They discovered two dogs that were left in New York without adequate shelter. They're following up and considering an action. Last month, I reported there was an incident in which there was a a dog was attacked and a person was injured. A dog that had been let out from Reinbeck to attacked a Red Hook resident's dog. And then the intervening attempt to separate the dogs, dog's owner was injured. That dog, the the SPCA was was preparing to take action, legal action, to deal with that. And the dog owner put the dog down. So that matter is resolved.
Thanks, Bill. Assessors report. The Assessor's Office has been busy processing all renewals that were required to renew for 2021. For the folks at home, if you're watching this, you're watching it probably on Monday, March 1. And that turns out to be the deadline for most of the exemption paperwork. So if you're watching this, do to get your form in if you haven't already. The assessor is working with Real Property Services regarding the town's level of assessment and the increase in sales for the town of Red Hook. And as has been reported, widely reported in the Hudson Valley and many communities, there's been an uptick in not only the the rate of sales, but obviously the price of sales. And so assessors everywhere, I'm sure, are trying to scramble to keep up with what's going on in the marketplace. The month of December, there were 10 sales in the town. There was one as high as two and a half million and the lowest one in the town was $396,000. There were also two vacant land sales, and that's interesting because we've seen very few vacant land sales. And one, 347, and two, 37 for the Village of Red Hook and three sales in Tivoli. And that is for December. In the month of January, there were 10 sales in the town with the highest at one and a half million. And then the lowest at 160,000, two sales in the Village of Red Hook. And again, three sales in the Village of Tivoli. And the assessor goes on to thank all the departments for their support in those efforts and for the folks at home. We appreciate your working around the fact that we are not open to the public and you're using our drop boxes. It's been very efficient for us to get the work done for you. Okay, Bill. Building and zoning permits.
The report for February is that there were 18 permits issued. They conducted 28 inspections. They issued 24 certificates of completion or certificates of occupancy and revenue was $5,099. It's obviously down from prior months because it is the dead of winter. And there's less things going on, but we'll see what happens when the snow melts and construction activities pick up.
And this is a partial month, a partial listing of the activities for the month. An already shortened month. Jacob. CAC report for February.
Yes. So the CAC, the Sauk Hill Watershed Community is now the local lead with the DEC's Amphibian Migration and Road Crossing Project. So they're looking for volunteers to help salamanders and frogs cross the road this spring. So if anybody is interested in that, the project coordinator for that is Amy Shine, and they should reach out to her at amyshine@gmail.com.
Can you describe that, Jacob, for people what that means to volunteer for that?
So I actually haven't participated and I wasn't able to attend this week's meeting, but it's my understanding that there are locations where we anticipate the amphibians crossing our roadways. So the idea is you have people there to kind of ensure that that can happen without the animals being hit by vehicles or without, you know, people coming across the roads, you know, potentially swerving or something like, because we're seeing, you know, animals in the road. So it's my understanding that it's, you know, to help the wildlife make their migration where we've established a road.
At night with the flashlight. Yeah.
Yep. It's good, good details to include. Thank you for adding that. Yeah, so that's, that's the first bullet point here. We also, the CAC would like to develop an updated natural resource inventory for the town as per Article 12 F, the general municipal law. It's intended to protect our resources by serving as a reference for the town zoning and planning boards as they evaluate proposed land use projects. So it's a good project that I know that they're taking initiative on. And then finally, the Sustainable Community Certification Program continues, and the working group for that is developing a pilot project for tiny houses to be a part of an art, history, trails and farm tour. So that's everything for the CAC for February 2021.
Thank you, Jacob. Next up is the Red Hook Recreation Commission Report. And Christine, would you mind doing this? As co liaison? Are you muted?
Yep, I was just looking for my mute button there. Okay. So even though it is winter, there's still a lot of activity happening around our recreational facilities and particularly interestingly to is the dugouts are the dugouts that are go with our challenger field that was installed. So Doug Strawinski, who's the chair of the Rec Committee and some other folks worked on a lot of carpentry work for the dugouts, the masonry footings and floors had been poured but had to set for a while. So now that that's ready, they completed all the carpentry work for the structures, the roof structures, the interior ceilings, the trim, steel doors and frames, et cetera. So there's a, that's great headway that's being made there even during the winter. There still are a lot of things that have to happen at the parks for the dugouts, for instance, but also in terms of getting electricity installed and for a lot of the facilities that we're adding, like pitching machines and the signs that will go up, scoreboards, et cetera. But also for, you know, outlets in the snack bars and cable that has to be pulled to get that done. So lots of, lots of things happening on multi fronts, still working to get security cameras installed. That is also something that requires the electricity to be in place. But they're they're coming. And then also, you know, we have to keep the, you know, we did a lot of work on the playground area. So they'll be, they're getting ready to order more of the cushioning that goes under all of the equipment there, going to be work doing doing work rather on the pavilion ceiling, the inside of that that has to happen. Not surprisingly, now that we have, you know, 20 some extra acres at Rec Park West that is also being maintained. We have looking at whether the equipment that we have is still going to be able to do that and what we might need to get if we have to add to that. So that's another thing that's being evaluated there. And so just some, you know, signage and now the requests are coming in for from groups who want to use the facilities in the spring and summer programs. So it, you know, we'll have to see what's happening with, you know, COVID and and, you know, what uses uses are going to be allowed. I know John is checking with the school district to see what if they they have plans or if they know what they're going to do about spring sports. And, you know, then still working on parking lot lights and dead trees. And unfortunately, someone actually ran over one of the trees in the park that had been planted near the parking lot. So that's going to have to be replaced in the spring. So they are definitely keeping busy with work, or they do a great job.
Thanks, Christine. And and thanks for touching on the the topic of of summer programs or all programs, frankly, that'll be taking place at at the Rec Park. It's it's our hope, and I think in many communities that there will be at least some type of summer program, if not a full a program. Obviously, we need to update the protocols to reflect what's happening at the time. And it requires, as it does And it requires, as it does each year, many months of planning, hiring folks. And so we're, we're, we're doing our best to adjust to the circumstances and to prepare for a summer program. And, and we certainly would like it if, you know, all the pieces come together so that we could provide that to you because we know that it's very important for a lot of families. We're, we're very proud of the fact that we can deliver this free program for children in our community and their families. So more, more updates as, as they evolve. And thank you to the commission for doing such great work. Speaking of great work, we have the Tree Preservation Commission, Jacob.
Yep. So for the February report for the Tree Preservation Commission, there are a couple of things. So seedlings for the Arbor Day celebration have been ordered from the Millbrook Cooperative Extension. The committee wishes to donate a bluebird nesting box to the Rec Park. So kind of nice that these are back to back with the Rec Park. So Mr. Kuhn will be contacted in the near future to discuss that. The nursery, Schitt's Nursery has contacted the Tree Preservation Commission and shared that the delivery fees are going to be increasing to $400 per tree order, which is a dramatic increase over past fees. The committee is exploring other options, including ordering from local retail nurseries to offset some of those costs. And then the committee members are planning to meet with Mr. Kuhn as soon as the weather improves to walk the Rec Park property and discuss possible tree planting sites. So maybe some new trees come into the Rec Park soon, which would be great.
Exactly right. And we'll be working, hopefully, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be working on more Rec Park West trail entrances, trail exits. We hope to be talking about more trail construction in 2021 and 2022, building out from our trailhead there off of Linden Avenue. Okay, let's see, what do we have? We do have a little bit of correspondence, but before that, we wanted to finish up our reorg from January and early February meetings. And to that end, Christine, you had a couple of updates or at least one update for us?
Yes, the, I heard back from Marion Johnson, who's the chair of the C, PDF and PDR and CPF Committee. And everyone is ready to be reappointed to new terms on that committee.
Matt, can you put up that list for us? The reorg list, share that for us, please. And while you're getting that up for the, for the screen, Matt, board, we also need to appoint a chair for the ZBA. And so at this time, I'd like to recommend that we appoint Kate Karakasas to chair the ZBA. Is there a second for that?
Second, second.
Thank you, Bill O'Neill. Any, any discussion? All in favor, Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much, folks. All right. Matt. Are we ready to appoint? Reappoint the members of the CPF? Got it up for us. Here we are, ready. So let's see, who do we need? Brent Kovalchuk would at this point be reappointed for a term ending in 2022. And that's, that's all we need to do at this point. I think we've got Chair Marion Johnson. All right, so good. We still have one vacancy on that committee. So Christine, would you like to make a motion that we reappoint Brent Kovalchuk?
So, so moved.
Seconded.
It's a three-year term. And for the folks at home, your Community Preservation Fund, which is that dedicated fund I mentioned earlier in the meeting, there are members of the community who sit on an advisory board and they recommend to the town board whether or not to contribute funds towards the project. The project must be in the adopted Community Preservation Fund plan. And that is available on the town's website. Okay, all in favor, myself, aye, Bill O'Neill?
Aye.
Aye, who are we missing?
Aye.
Jacob Testa, thank you, thank you. Bits of course, abundance. Okay, we have a letter from Noreen, unless there's a typo in her name, Noreen Nakayo Hayton. If you, many of you probably know, Noreen, she runs the Imagination Station Program. Or now it's, I think it's referred to as I Station, it says on her letter there. So looking to, for the board to consider a mural in the park. And so I would just put that out there, that that's a request, something we would want to consider and get more information on. But this is her ask for the town.
I think actually there is, we did get quite a bit of information on the proposal. So I'm not really sure if you want to act on it tonight.
I, I'm not ready to act on it yet. I would like to get a little more information about where it's going and what it's going to look like and, and so on and so forth before, before agreeing to it. But, but I certainly would be in a position perhaps at the next meeting if we request some, some more stuff from Noreen to act on it. But what do others, others think?
Well, I think John Kuhn did send us a memo where he said that traditionally, the committee, the recreation committee's not been in favor of murals in the park because they're, you know, worried it will attract graffiti.
Okay.
That may, I, you know, that does make sense to me. And with the extra work that our committee members or in our Rec Department are doing to maintain the property, I think that certainly does make sense not to. I mean, it, it could be a full project for sure, but I'm just not sure that we have the capacity to maintain it and take care of it if it is installed in the park with all that we're asking our Rec Department to do right now. And I would hate to see it go in and then be damaged.
Okay.
I, I agree with Christine.
Okay, fine. Bill, Jacob?
I agree with Christine as well. I read the memo from John and he made some sound points.
Yeah, I agree. And I think that, you know, maybe we could think about whether there's another location in the town where the mural might be, you know, a good fit for it.
Okay.
It's a good idea, Jacob.
Or in the village, yeah. Good. Okay. Next, next up, Linda Keeling writes to us with some suggestions about the Ethics Board and sort of reconstituting it and other recommendations. And so we could take a look at that. It may be time to take a look at our ethics code. We do need to appoint a, a member. We're, we're down a member right now. There's a vacancy. So if you folks have an idea of who you think might be good for that board, you know, please, please send a, a recommendation along. Okay, I think that's all we have for now. For the folks at home, we're, we're going to go into executive session to discuss some, some tax matters. And so we're going to leave you for a period of time and then we'll be coming back for any potential action that we will take on these matters. There's nothing else outside of attorney client or executive session that will be, business will be conducting tonight. So if you don't stay on, we'd like to wish you good health and we'll see you again March 9th. All right. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Executive session, I'm sorry, executive session for the purpose of?
Discussing tax matters, as I, I mentioned, Article seven matters, which go into real estate assessments. Okay, and so I think that's all in favor. Open on Christine, all in favor, Jacob?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, and Bill O'Neill, we already have. So very good. So board members, if you would mute yourself and turn off your videos, we'll do this by audio.